Okay, I think we can call the meeting to order if everybody is ready. And we'll start the meeting with public or union comments.
Like to make a comment?
Sure.
If you'll allow me to get my phone here. So, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Paula Brown-Wyngstock. I am a full professor here in the Social Science Department. This year marks my 23rd year of teaching at FMCC. This evening, I am here in my role as the Vice President of the FACE Union. I'm here to request that the Board encourage and support the administration's consideration in rewarding discretionary promotions this year. As you may or may not be aware, the last time discretionary promotions were awarded to FACE members was during the 2015-2016 academic year. In September of 2016, when those promotions went into effect, we had 84 full-time FACE members. Six years later, we are down to 54 full-time FACE members. That's almost a 40% shrinkage of the FACE workforce. Fifty-four FACE members continue to do all the work of 84 members back in 2015. Not only has no one been granted a discretionary promotion in six years, no one who was hired from 2017 on has received discretionary promotion. No one hired within the last 15 years has benefited from discretionary promotion. We continue to not only fulfill our job duties but go above and beyond to provide exemplary student services and instructions to our students. In addition, we provide service to the college through committee work, which we often chair, engage in curriculum development and modification, conduct assessments and program reviews, serve as club advisors, come in at evenings and weekends to run programs, conduct open houses and orientations, and volunteer our time and expertise to the local communities while engaging in professional development, just to name a few, to ensure that our students receive a quality, well-rounded education. This lack of discretionary promotions over the years has not only impacted our members economically by putting a substantial debt in their lifetime earning potential, but it's also greatly impacted the morale of our members. For these reasons, we respectfully request that discretionary promotions be awarded this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public or the union? Hearing none, we will move on to approval of the meeting minutes from our September 15th meeting. Does any, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes? Trustee Winsman, a second. Trustee Gazim Agadum. Is there any discussion, any corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Now, we will move on to the chairman's report. If you recall, last month, we met and discussed that it was time for us to talk about the presidential salary and benefits. There is a motion in your packets. You'll see that an evaluation was completed by the Board in the September meeting, and the Board established the salary and benefits for the '22-'23 fiscal year. It is the recommendation that the Board approve a 2% salary increase for Dr. Trucker Miller for this fiscal year and the provisions of the contract, all of their provisions that will remain. Would look for a sponsor for that resolution?
Sure.
Trustee Landrio, a second. Trustee Gazim Agadum. Is there any discussion? I would actually sponsor an amendment to that motion if anyone would consider a second. This, the discussion at last month's meeting was delayed by a month because we had a month where we didn't meet and our fiscal year actually starts September 1st. So, the amendment that I would suggest is appropriate and in keeping with how we typically handle these items would be to make this effective on September 1st. So, I'll take a second from Trustee Gazim Agadum. And is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll have a motion on, sorry, a vote on the resolution amendment. All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Abstentions? And now, we will vote on the resolution as amended, which would just change the effective date from today to September 1st. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Moving on to the president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the Board as well. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. See what all these things. This week, I attended the president's meeting in UDAKON. And we had a number of items. There were a few items on the agenda for Fortnite app and... Okay, so, we talked about advocacy. We talked about enrollment initiatives, and we had a representative from the Department of Labor that was there to talk to us about future of the workforce and current state affairs. So, at your place, you will see the, at the one-page advocacy sheet that we prepared for our lobbying efforts this year. It is time to begin our discussions with the legislation, with the Governor's Office. What we are requesting, and we're trying to have a unified voice, and so, we've been discussing this with the MICT as well, is the floor plus four. So, what that means is permanent funding of 100% of the current year as the floor and a 4% increase on top of that to help some cost, that's in utilizing costs. There's also a request to restore the funding for high-cost programs. In the past, we've received some differential funding for certain programs in healthcare and information technology, et cetera, that gave us a little boost to help us support those programs. So, we're asking that funding to be restored as well. The right side of the page just kind of talks about some of the benefits. What can colleges do? So, it's very similar to what we did last year. We're trying to keep the message simple. You make it too complicated and it stops listening. So, we're asking to keep their current commitment and increase by 4%. So, we'll be discussing this with the other affiliate groups as well, some of which, you know, Jackie's not here tonight, so we'll be talking to the chief student affairs group about it, the chief executive officers about it. Different institutions have different approaches to lobbying, and certainly, many of you have connections with our legislators, and so, we'll provide a sheet for you to help with those discussions. SUNY has been rolling out several initiatives on behalf of all 64 campuses. They've started with an in-state marketing campaign that focuses on, and again, at your place, you'll see a script of those conversations that they're having with students. They have, they pumped some money into call centers and students who will apply to the SUNY application, the Common Application. They're doing a free application week next week. That's something that we do all the time, but some of our students do come through the SUNY app, which typically has a processing fee, and some come through the Common App, which also has a processing fee. What SUNY is actually doing is paying those fees for students who apply during that time, who have to use that fee. Our application is always free, so, but it's nice to get that extra boost. The other thing that they're, after that campaign concludes, they're working on a tuition match and how to stay marketing. The tuition match is for four-year colleges because, you know, even if they're in a match, our tuition is still cheaper. But they are, in addition, focusing on the contiguous states around New York for all 64 campuses. So, those are the campaigns that they've thrown some money at as part of the additional funding that the legislature had assigned to SUNY to ask for. They're using that money to try and market the system and help campus enroll. This week, the Governor announced, you may have seen this press release, about $150 million for workforce development programs. I know that several of our staff members participated in a webinar the other day, I think it was yesterday, maybe. Some of these programs are programs that we may be able to apply for funds. There's a quick turnaround on some of them, so we're assessing what programs, if any, are ones that make sense for us to pursue. But the Governor continues to throw money at workforce development. I talked to you previously about the SUNY revitalization funds. Again, this came out of that, those additional funds that the legislature added to the SUNY ask, and we were, as I mentioned, we had to submit a plan. We actually got a little bit of a bump on what we originally thought we were gonna receive. Originally, they told us we were gonna give about 400. It turns out, we're gonna give up almost 450. They did approve our plan this week, so we have a plan that takes about $100,000 and puts those into strategic enrollment initiatives, and about $350,000 that goes toward a cybersecurity lab. And again, these weren't dollars that we could just plug into the operating budget and, you know, fill holes that were made by enrollment decline or other revenue loss. These were funds that we had to apply, and they're one-time funds, and they were looking for us to build up programs and look for ways for us to increase marketing and things like that, so. We also talked previously about the SARP funds. These are American Rescue Plan dollars that were made available by application as opposed to by formula. We had, there were, there were specific criteria for institutions to apply. We happened to fit some of those criteria, and we did apply, we were accepted. Again, another one where we had to submit a plan. So, that plan, we also received word this week, was approved. This plan has roughly half of it, not roughly, exactly half of it is emergency student grant money. The other half, we are using for local match for capital projects that we were, had planned anyway. So, we're able to use these funds as match and get additional bank for the fund. And the SUNY Office Capital Facilities is also approved, a plan that we submitted for that. On to other capital projects, because everybody loves it when they talk about capital projects. Fulton County set their public hearing for November 14th, and just as a reminder, our proposed projects for next year, it's a million dollars. That's how the counties want us to try to chump these projects up. We're replacing some more fire alarm systems that have become obsolete. We're doing some stairway refurbishment at Hill County Hall, exterior lighting replacements, paving engineering study is a precursor to what we think we're gonna be investing in the next couple of years in terms of improvement for paving, and some significant IT upgrades. So, Fulton County, it's moved to the Finance Committee, Capital Projects Committee. It's now a public hearing. We've set the public hearing. This afternoon, a correspondent from Montgomery County, they are, they have a resolution in the Hopper for their November meeting to approve the projects as well. So, once those projects are approved at the local level, the local county level, they get submitted to SUNY, and then the SUNY Office Capital Facilities includes that in their ask for the state budget, so. And it's 250 per county? It's 250 per county. Correct. And Fulton County does a three-year plan that they put in front of the public, and we have that same million dollars and plugged in for each year for the next three years. It's part of their plan. They have reserved the right to change that plan every year, but it is in there. Montgomery County does a six-year look, but it's, it's more, they consider projects a year at a time. They wanna know what the six-year impacted as projects are gonna, they have a different approach, but they also bond for projects as opposed to Fulton County, which pays cash. So, that, I believe, concludes my updates unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to the College Senate Report with student trustees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I'm going to be covering some things that I heard from the previous Student Senate meeting and also some other things that I've talked with the student body as well. So, first, I'll go into the Student Senate meeting from the first Thursday of October, which was the 6th, I believe. All positions were filled for the upcoming spring semester, as some of those positions that are currently being manned by some of our current officers will be vacated following December graduation, as some of our students will be graduating early this year. So, some of the things that we touched upon during the meeting is that there is going to be a trip to Pennsylvania. I think it's going to be a sort of like a historical tour of some landmarks. That's going to be on the 28th, so that is next Friday, and an all-day trip, the 6 o'clock, 11 o'clock. And I'm not really sure of the participation on that, and it's just something that they touched upon briefly during the meeting. The annual budget rollouts, so just kind of like our, sort of like our overview of what the budgets are going to be this year for each of our respective clubs, that was just kind of touched upon during the meeting as well. And then, the, there were some sports conversations about the athletic teams. As we know, we had a lot of success. We've been having a lot of success this fall with some of them. I was a part of one of the teams. It was a very good experience, and I really enjoyed it very much. So, there were a lot of discussions about that, which was really nice to see. So, there is a lot of knowledge about what's going on in the athletic department, and there is a lot of optimism about the upcoming winter season as well for our basketball teams as well. Student Senate Association members also discussed success from the previous blood drives, so it's definitely something that a lot of folks in that meeting want to get involved with and continue, because it seems to be one of our most successful volunteer efforts. We usually have anywhere between a couple to sometimes multiple clubs that try to co-sponsor and get involved in that, and we had, it seems to be 35 donors present at the previous drive, which was in the earlier, earlier days of September, I believe. I don't remember the exact date for that. But we, they had, they had set a goal for 36 donors, and we ended up having 35 donors present, so we were already on track to hit that goal. And we're hoping to upsize and get up anywhere between 40 and 50, which is gonna be for our upcoming one next semester. Registration for spring semester classes, that was discussed as well amongst the members, just so we can kind of get some of the students acclimated to the fact that we have to get in touch with the advisors, and we just talked a little bit about what to do and how to prepare for that moving forward. And we also briefly touched upon some of the experiences of some of the students at the club fair transfers, for those who are going to be graduating this year and also earlier, or later, rather, around in December. Now, moving on to our organizations and clubs. So, I've been trying to get in touch with some of the leaders of said clubs. As we move forward in the coming months, I look to be getting, as I've discussed in the last meeting, an organized survey with each of the club leaders and also with the constituent members and just regular members of the student body as well. And that's still in the works. I'm still working on that. The hope is to get that released to the general student body by the start of November, so that'll be in a little under a couple of weeks. And that's just gonna basically be like, almost like a quality improvement survey, kind of like along the lines of what I did in the first meeting, but more of like, I have more people to come off of and kind of see what we need to work on as a student body. So, many organizations are still in the early planning stages for the upcoming remainder of the Fall 2022 Session and the upcoming Spring 2023 Session, FMCC. And some of these things are just like, you know, like dynamics, what we're gonna do for club meetings moving forward. Also, still finalizing some positions for some of the clubs and for the coming, next semester, and also like fundraisers and things like that that clubs do for either a cause around the community, on the campus, or for independent fundraisers for the club themselves. So, some of the ideas that I've been brainstormed at some of the club meetings, according to meetings from my club, which is the SNA, and also other clubs. So, some things that have come to fruition have been, so the gaming, so the gaming club has been talking about doing maybe some tournaments at the school, almost like a little fundraiser to fund the gaming club. That was a gaming club-specific thing that they were talking about at the meeting. And then, some of the clubs were touching upon school trips as well, which some of them have says they've done in the past. And fundraisers, which seems to be the most common thing that a lot of the clubs have been talking about, and some are for on-campus causes, so, you know, we have our food pantry that a lot of the students are very aware of and are really admire. A lot of the students have a lot of great things to say about how the pantry is run and what its purpose is and how we serve not only students here but people around the area, which is a really great thing that we do here. So, we are looking forward to doing more to continue to keep that stock and be able to move forward with that. Also, our independent club fundraisers, as I touched upon, drive food drives, clinics off-site, this is more of like a healthcare-specific thing, but in the SNA meetings, we've talked about going to revolving high schools around the area and trying to really educate them more about some of our focused healthcare programs, since that we are upsizing said programs with the new grants that we have received, and hoping to get more interest from the locals from that as well. Next, I'm gonna touch upon the open house. So, I was asked by one of my professors, just actually a couple hours ago, to kind of be one of the representatives of the open house, and I will accept to do that. And what I really am planning on doing is, a lot of folks around the common, the common area, just from talking to them and being friends with them, they, they know FMCC as, as the college that's just in Johnstown, but when I ask them more about the college, they just say it's cheap and it's small, and there's a lot more than just the surface, which is it's smaller and, you know, it is very affordable, and that's a very great thing to get your career started, but there's so much more beneath the surface that people need to be educated on. So, I am looking forward to really touching upon those specific things at the open house and really tell them more about how many opportunities there really are at this school, because even though that this is a small college in terms of enrollment and size, the opportunities are really, they have like the magnitude of that of like a four-year school. There are a ton of opportunities here. So, I'm looking forward to touching upon that. Next, I wanna talk about education and teachers. So, I did talk to some of the students, just like sporadically, about their experiences in the classroom, because that's obviously the driving force of coming to an institution like this, and asking them, you know, what's it like, you know, how's the interaction between the students and the teachers? I get a lot, and I mean a lot of great, great things from these teachers, and I really wanna just take this moment, it's actually great that we have one with us today. I really wanna say thank you. My students, as we have in the student body, I'd like to say that we, we really appreciate all the work that you're putting in, especially, I know that it can be overwhelming at times. I've had some of my teachers bounce between so many different responsibilities and my program individually, and I just really admire what these folks go through and what, and what they do to kind of put themselves out there to give us the best chance to succeed. And I really think that it's important that we highlight that as a huge positive moving forward and also using it as sort of like a marketing tool to kind of say, hey, listen to the students that are incoming. We really need to talk more about, you know, we might have a small school, but we have a great staff. We have a lot of prestige. We have folks that have been here for years that have a lot of experience in their respective knowledge fields, and I think that's gonna be another great talking point moving forward with students incoming and also early admit students, which I'll touch upon just a moment. Same thing with athletics. We have some coaches that have been around their respective sports and just areas of knowledge of sports for a long, long time, and those are very experienced and are very grounded and really just offer really another great alternative addition to the student life and emboldening in that process in college. So, it's also important that we touch upon that with the students at the open house. Granted affordability, as I touched upon briefly, affordability is the driving force for many of these students that I asked to say it's a very affordable college, and the grants are only going to give us more of an opportunity for students that need more of an advantage to come here. And as I touched upon the survey plans, I plan on getting that November survey out to all students. And so, at that point, that kind of covers everything that I've been touching upon so far, but the main things that I really just wanted to glance over and is just really show you what I've been trying to get ready to do in the coming months, and also what I plan on telling incoming students, because I do feel that if we just kind of open up the picture a little more about what we have here, I think it's gonna really, really help us moving forward with those that are coming in. And one more thing I just do wanna add is that I have met with a pretty decent amount of our early admit students, and I've got nothing but positive remarks from them. They, they frequently like to crowd our little student lounge over by the library, and there's usually around 40 to 50 early admit students there, and they're all either doing work, talking with each other, and a lot of them have said that the main thing that they like in opposition is that they're able to come and kind of get that college experience early, and they're also said that it's also a very individualized college experience, because we are a smaller college and they're able to get that one-on-one experience with our staff. So, in that terms, from the early admit students, nothing but positives. And that's all I have. Reserve this time for any questions anybody has.
Thank you. They asked the right person to just present. Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin, I have a request. Maybe after the meeting, we could have a quick sidebar on the registration efforts on the campus and also on the student survey post-grads.
Yes, I'd love to speak to you about that. I'd love to get your input.
Okay, good. Thank you. And one further.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you. We will move on to the Foundation Report with Trustee Gazim Agadum.
Good evening, everyone. The 55th day service was held on September 30th in Allen House. More than 50 breakfast buffet style was served to everybody, yet this, this number is the most so far we had, and we had two panelists to share from each county, and the topic was about drug, crime, and legalization of marijuana. And the panelist from Fulton County was Richard Piarino, and from Montgomery County was Jeff Smith. And if you never attend this event, it's wonderful. I encourage you guys to go. This year is over, but we have another one. You can mark it down in your calendar for next year, June 30th, 2023. The Financial Technology Center Revencutting was on September 22nd, and some of us attend, and it was amazing. Just, it blew us away. After a little cocktail, then they take us for a tour of the area, and Mr. Zuckerman was explaining what's going on, and all around the room was a computer that a student, they can have access to it. And beside, it was very interesting. I forget, where, where they, when we were going to school, it seems like you are encouraged to start, you know, going to school again. And of course, they were working on this center for a few years, and many people, they were directly involved and worked very hard. Dr. Trucker Miller, Diana Partnem, Dr. Snyder, and of course, Mr. Larry Zuckerman. And please forgive me if I forget somebody else. It was wonderful. The 15th Annual Distill Bush Alumni, it will take place in Johnson Holiday Inn, November 3rd. And we have two awardee, one of them is our, the chairman, Mr. Beck, and he was graduated in 1987 with AS Business Administrator Administration from FM, and the other one is Jewel Yan A. and he was graduated AAS from FM in 1987. And he was graduated in AAS from FM in 1987. And we are very, very delighted. And at the same time, there is the second annual tower, clock tower award goes to Dr. Rao and family. Dr. Rao, Mrs. Rao and family. Congratulations to all of them and they are very well deserved. And in addition, our scholarship student, they are going to attend that meeting. But the sponsor for that meeting for them is Mr. and Mrs. John and Sunday Blackman. And it's wonderful. Thanks to them. Oh, if, if you didn't get any invitation for this, you know, distinguished alumni, please get in touch with Mrs. Bosley. And I'm sure she will be more than happy to accommodate everyone. Foundation has another fundraising and that is for the vitalization of athletic fields. And they think, they are guessing the total amount for that is five million. And half of this price we have to, I mean, foundation has to provide them funding to fundraising. This is a good news and.
I was going to show these.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So these are, this is a draft rendering of what they possibly could be. We have a footprint over here, including tennis courts and whatever. So if anybody wants to look at them, you're open here for availability. I also can email them to you as well. So that's going to be our next effort, next project. So mentioning athletics. Actually, I just, I just don't want to interrupt Taibei. But I spoke to Adirondack Community College and our grant writer today. And she was informing me that with their new fields, and they're not even complete at Adirondack. They increased their enrollment for athletics by a hundred and seven percent. So there is that little bit of competition between colleges. So and there's a lot of other statistics too, but this was my first time having a conversation with her. So we will keep the trustees informed of how we move forward with that. So yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The foundation annual AP is going to be sent out the end of November. And the last but not least, foundation will begin in its annual audit this month. If, is there anything that?
There's one more thing I wanted to say that Evan is so kind to be our welcome for our distinguished alumni dinner. So he will be doing the welcome that evening for us. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Taibei. Good to hear your message.
Is there any question?
No questions, Taibei. In the academic report, on page seven of that report, there's the link to the ribbon cutting. You probably, you might have it in that as well.
Yeah.
If people haven't seen it.
But you know, they send it out to everybody. Some people probably they were busy.
Yeah.
But it was wonderful.
Yeah, it sounded it.
Wonderful. It's very, very efficient, you know. Roberta and Mr. Wrensmann and I myself, we were there and we enjoyed it very much.
I got it. Yes, wonderful.
If no question, we conclude with my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to the community reports and finance with trustee.
The expense graphs are included in your packet. There's two graphs presented. One provides expense and budget data by major function. And another provides expense and budget data by contracted services category. The graphs compare data for fiscal year 2021, 22 to fiscal year 22, 23. The expense summary budget versus actual for the period of 9/1/22 to 8/31/23, which is eight percent of our fiscal year. To date, expenses, actual expenses and encumbrances are 10% of budget. And there's a note mentioning the current operating budget has been adjusted to include the encumbrances from the year ended 8/31/22. The expense detailed by department provides by department, a detailed comparison of our expenses and encumbrances to budget for the period of 9/1/22 to 8/31/23, which is eight percent again of our fiscal year. Finance statements for the period of 9/1/21 to 8/31/22, which is 100% of our fiscal year. Note that revenue includes billing activity through 8/31/22 for the fall '21, winter, spring and summer 2022 semesters. This represents 69.7% of our tuition budget. All expenses incurred represent twelve months or 89.4% of budget. The figures are preliminary and unedited. Financial year-end activities are still ongoing. Their budget transfer report and contract reports are also in your packet. There were no grants, grants reported this month. The Herd Federal Stimulus Fund update summarizes the institutional federal stimulus fund awards that the college has received as of September 2022 and what those funds have been used for. We do have a board motion to approve the budget transfers. The Board of Trustees approves all budget transfers between budgetary departments that exceed $5,000 and all transfers that affect full-time salary accounts. This budget transfer for 2022, 23 is needed to cover anticipated expenses related to contracted services. Recommendation, the president recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022, 23 budget transfer listed on the attached page. That is Department 2850, objective institutional account 4360, contracted services, transferring $9,000 to Department 2503, financial aid account 4305, other expenses for $9,000.
Would you have sponsored that motion?
Absolutely.
Do you have a second? Trustee Gardele, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries?
Thank you. The college's external auditors are scheduled to begin their field work for the annual audit the week of October 17th. If there are no questions, that concludes our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will move on to buildings and grounds with trustee Gardele.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things you would like to point out in your packets. The recent mainstream produced a lot of damage to our PBA, the PV building group. They were indicated by photographs in your pack. That would be something that you would have to consider in the coming years of gas replacing that group. The other thing I just want to point out that the science lab faced two projects. The status is unchanged. We're still waiting for case work, doors, windows. And also furniture for this project. And Madam Chair, if there's any questions?
So cool. Greg, I have one question. The condition of the AP we're building with now, is it prepared? And does the contractor feel like it's winter worthy at this point in time?
It's, it's, you know, it's been a number of years since that really been addressed. And it's, it's really high on our priority list in terms of getting that fixed. Three-year, four-year, five-year capital money and so on. But they feel like they've got to fix in place for that.
We'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Gardella.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good to be back with CEO. Kristy Davis held an internship fair yesterday, actually from 11:00 to 1:00. And the fair, as it has done in the past, provides opportunities for all majors to interact with people from the community who are providing those internships. And it's important to note that just last semester, at least five student interns were offered full-time positions by their internship sites, which is wonderful. Most of the other interns have secured employment and they use the internship, regardless of whether they get employment or not, as a resume building, building while others pursue an additional education. So hats off to all those who have housed the interns and the interns who have taken advantage of that real opportunity. The first community resources meet greet and eat will be held on November 17th at 10:30 in the Allen House. And these are so that people can, in fact, meet the community resources that are available to the college and to the community at large. And there is our SVP for November 11th. If you have an organization or you work with one that would like to be part of this. And again, it is November 17th and there is much provided. And that is also something that has come under the workforce development and under Kristy Davis's, right? Okay, thank you. And career planning, we have with Adam Strubner, some four-year agreements. SUNY Billington articulation for the AS nursing to the BS nursing. And at SUNY Canton, the AAS nursing to the BS nursing articulation agreements. Following four-year schools provide a campus visits to provide transfer information to students. St. Rose, SUNY Albany, Sage and Nazareth. So those are important opportunities for students to learn more about their futures. There is a Money Smart Financial Coaching Program that Mary Switman, Mark Swain and Charlene Dybus are developing as a non-credit course and supports the program for financial coaches and their students. And you have a lot of click and pieces on that as well on page four. Business and Community Partnership, SUN News. FM student Jeremy Nunes recently won the Catalyst Industry Design Challenge at SUNY Buffalo. This was a national competition with teams all across the country. So many congratulations to Jeremy. We also had another first for us, a student accepted to the Disney Partnership Program for the spring of 2023. Congratulations to student Dwight Rose, who has been accepted into the Disney College Program for the spring semester. It's the first time an FMCC student has been so accepted. And it is one of the most, more challenging internships to secure with less than a 30% acceptance rate. But we'll find out in December what his role will be. So many, many congratulations to Dwight Rose for that opportunity as well. SUNY High Flex Initiative, which you have heard about from Vice President for Academic Affairs, Diana Putnam over the summer at different points. But during their summer workshop, this summer workshop, Julie and Mark read the book Distracted, which covers student learning, attention and instructive teaching methods. And out of that has come so much interest and discussion about teaching methods that we now have a year-long book club that meets once a month in the new library conference room. And the first meeting was September 28th. And what's really important about this is it goes across the disciplines, right? In academic disciplines and does still keep within the High Flex, you know, model of talking about different ways to deliver instruction in terms of online and in person. So that's been met with a great deal of excitement by everyone who's participating. And the door is open, right, for future participants. Business Department Study Abroad is, is with us. So it's nice to see that after COVID, there is life after COVID, right, for many. And during spring semester, FM Business Division is going again to offer Business 206, which is that international business study abroad. And so we have Irish Heritage Region and the topics introduce business practices in cultures throughout Europe with a comparison to how they might be different from business culture in the United States. If you are interested in attending, because community members may go, the contact for that is Professor of Business, Mark Swain. And so take a look at it. It's during spring break. So it's a, it's a concentrated period for people who are otherwise employed from March 18th through 26th. Wall Street Club, another group that traditionally travels and will be able to do that with their Wall Street visitations as they have in the past. Again, we mentioned the ribbon cutting ceremony for the technology, the financial center, excuse me, is in the packet on page seven, the link. Propost and back Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'm going to throw this one to you because I don't want to mess it up. But Jeremy Sprags, right, it refers to was hired by SUNY Research Foundation as a part-time employee at SUNY Poly. And this was very interesting, but I don't want to mess it up. So you want to say Biden is so important for him and for us and for everybody else of all.
Yeah, it's a very prestigious position that, that he's secured to work with SUNY Poly, but also with Albany Nano. And he's actually responsible for some curriculum development for technicians that they're going to be hiring. So not only does he create the, he could just basically train the trainer, but he's actually being involved in some of the facilitation of that training. So it's, it's very prestigious, like what it is, it's very good for our college too, because it keeps him abreast of the field, you know, and, and what technicians need to learn to do on the job. So it helps hone in his skills. It's very similar to what I see in nursing and rad tech, where they continue to work in their field. Jeremy has secured a similar position. So kudos to Jeremy. Congratulations to Jeremy. He works very hard and he's doing a great job with that. It's very good for our college.
It is indeed. Thank you. And speaking of rad tech, and their state conference, Colin O'Leary presented for the first time at that conference. And his topic was focused on radiographic physics and was entitled Interactions That Matter. So he's, he's busy as usual and they were all busy at the conference. Our students took the poster award one, two and three places, one to our students. There is a technician, in technician news, there's Chris Huxby, who was, who just finished her health physicist degree at Michigan State. And she has a rather interesting and demanding and exciting opportunity with the Army to, to be a specialist with them on looking at the safety for radioactive sites for Army personnel and also to help in the training and licensing of Army personnel that will be on those sites and will be protecting everyone in body. So good for her and good for her start here with us. We have, oops, sorry, Tabitha Sabatier, another 214, 2014 alumna. Won an award there for the dedication and service. Many of you know that she's also an adjunct with us. So she remains loyal to the FM community and certainly bringing many advantages to it in her work. Five of the eight rad tech members of the State Board of Rad Tech Professionals are from FM. And I think you could name most of them, so I won't go through that. But they are all named, the usual suspects who continue to promote that program and, and do such a fine job in so doing. And then we have William F., an instructor at, for cybersecurity, has recently presented a computer-related program with a focus on computer networking and cybersecurity. And I understand he's a relatively new employee. And he, like many of ours, have old and new hit the ground running and bring many important opportunities to our students. And that, I believe, is the academic affairs report for this month, manager and fellow trustees. Emma, should I have a question?
Thank you, trustee Gardella. Thank you. There will be no report from the Student Affairs tonight, but there is a significant amount of information and activity in your packets. And we will move on to diversity, equity and inclusion with Mr. Van Widda.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't make it last time. I got my first cold in three years. The mess came off. It didn't work that way, so I didn't want to contaminate anybody with it. One of the things I've been doing over the last like 15 years is trying to go in more direction of recent conflict studies, which I've done. And this is, I put together a packet here and it's pretty extensive. And I'll be more than happy to explain it to you sometime, probably not today because it's long. And I've given it to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council. And it really focuses on compassionate communication guidelines and what I consider an informed assertive compassion. Because sometimes people view it that, that it's kind of weak. So I'm trying to sort of reset that. And sort of compassionate workplace and management approach is ACE, which is reverse childhood experience. which are diverse childhood experiences and self-care and meditation and mindfulness. Well, how does this fit into what we're doing? I don't think that like a one or two-hour training makes that much of a difference with people. You see it. I think this has to be sort of from the ground up in this case. So nonviolent communication by a guy named Marshall Rosenberg really has, what we're really doing is learn to listen to each other and hear what each person's needs are. I've actually started to work with another workplace on this because, you know, as a former supervisor of stuff, I've often sat down with people and asked them, so what are your needs? It's just kind of a basic question, but it doesn't get done. Instead, we really tend to dictate what we want from people. So what we're trying to do is open up the dialogue around what people's needs are and create spaces where they're actually able to tell us what they are and maybe work together to try and address those types of needs. So it takes time. It takes a lot of courage. You've got to be able to, willing to be, listen to people, be vulnerable and hear things. I usually use the example of white professors teaching minority students. Literature is pretty spooky. It's really scary to take a look at it, basically. But if you don't look at it, you don't change. So, you know, in the spirit of working together to, to become more effective educators and provide an equal and just environment for people, this is what I'm suggesting. It's gonna take time. Everybody's really busy and there's a lot of information there. But what I usually do suggest is you go find Marshall Rosenberg and get the book or the videos online for free, all right? And then what you can do is start listening and just make little changes. Because a lot of us get into the argumentative headset and we've certainly seen this in the world of social media. But actually stopping, listening, considering information. And what just came into my mind is, do you know what a European starling is? Particularly a bird, a friend of mine who swears or brackles. And no matter what you do and tell them, they will not change their mind. Their belief is set. They are not going to change. I can send them to the Cornell websites. So rather than sort of arguing with people, create the conditions where maybe they can take in some new information. So if any of you want to read through that stuff, I think I attached. If I didn't attach that one, I can send it next time. Feel free and I'm willing to answer any questions I can about that one. Let's see, calendar of events. We really, we did a few things for Hispanic, Latinx Heritage Month, mostly on the screens. We really didn't get organized as much as we would have liked to, to maybe do some events. I tend to give out extra credit for people, you know, identify these twelve people and tell me who they are. Little things that we can incorporate in the classrooms. And I'm gonna have to start to get a best practices list and what people are doing here. So I know people are doing some things, we just don't have them documented just yet. International Day of Peace. I love this year's theme and racism build peace. That's when I built the Building Peace course here, that was in my mind. And my last dying words will be, peace is about structural violence. And I'll be trying to once again explain that it's about justice and equity and eliminating gender bias, racism, those types of things. Again, it gets a bad name. So that fit in nicely. We did some, a little bit of an event on that. Actually, this year I spotlighted Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and I actually got emails from people saying thank you. Because that wasn't something that people really looked at too much. Later this month, we have the birthday of the Baha'i, which is an interesting group that's southern Iran. If you ever read their ethical system, it's amazing. Equal justice for genders, environmental statements about sustainability. And this was like 200 years ago that this came up. That's what was actually one of the things that got me thinking about the eco psychology class. So just raising awareness and trying to find some common ground between religions, which would be the short-term version is the Golden Rule. If you start thinking, if you really took a look at the Golden Rule and focused on that, what would happen? What would change? And I think that's a possibility. But again, you can tie that in with people like Rosenberg. What we choose to focus on makes a big difference in the dialogue we create around it. It's gonna be important. Let's see, National Coming Out Day was October 11th, of course. October 10th was Indigenous Peoples' Day. We put out some information on that. October 24th is United Nations Day. Now, on their website, which I checked out the other day, it was another nice thing. United Nations, peace, dignity and equality on a healthy planet. And I thought, yes, okay, this is exactly what I've been saying for a long time, intertwined. And then we have the Building Peace and the Think Peace Club and the Sustainable Living Club. We've incorporated diversity, equity and inclusion nets. It all kind of rolls together. What we're seeing is more of a global movement that understands this is also about environmental justice and, you know, having a sustainable planet. And I know for some, these conversations can get a little bit controversial and tense. But unfortunately, we have nonviolent communication. If we can agree to that, we can actually sit down and find some common ground. And November is Native American Heritage Month. Okay, so that's my brief report. Any questions? Feel free.
Thank you. There will be no live report from accreditation or personnel, but there is information in your packets. We will move on to the policy, trustee clear. Thank you. Do any of the trustees have any other business to come before the birthday? We do have to have an executive session this evening. Purpose for the executive session are the ongoing contractual updates in relation to the FCA and the FED housing. So I would ask for a motion by trustee Peck and a second by trustee Wensman to go into executive session. We will not have any business to conduct after the executive session. So no one's saying that is not a trustee. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll just take a, just a brief break and see.